Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Board of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, November 21st, 2024. We are meeting at one government center in the first floor hearing room. First, we're to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F. I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio devices by Mr. Craig Salvatore at Fall River Government TV. If anyone desires to make an audio, a video, or a combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. There hearing none. We shall move on. If I didn't lose my place. Our recording secretary this evening is Ms. Patty Agiar, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are regular members James Colkins, who is our clerk, Dan DePere, and Ricky Sahadi. Also sitting in this evening are alternate members, Mr. Eric Kelly and Alexis Anselmo. Also with us this evening, sitting to my far left, is the Director of Engineering and Planning, Mr. Dan Agiar. Patty, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, as amended?
Yes.
I thereby declare the November 21st, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including petitioners, abut as anyone in support or anyone opposed to a petition, that your presentation be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claims. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested parties that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board's authority exists pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope to and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by the Board has a real unmasking effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after the decision of the Board has been made. A copy of the ordinance is available in the City Clerk's office and the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multi-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies to provide for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizens' input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of this meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available in the Clerk's office and that one shall not rely on the online zoning ordinance. With that, good evening, everyone, and welcome. We will open this up with Old Business, item number 01, Grand Manor Holdings LLC, Care of Attorney Peter A. Solino, 289 Bank Street, MAP, N04, Lot 29. The applicant seeks a variance special permit to convert the existing four-unit apartment building into an eight-unit apartment building waiving dimensional requirements. Additionally, the petitioner is requesting a special permit to waive parking requirements. The property is located in an A2 apartment zoning district and an AOD arts overlay district. This petition was tabled from the October 17th meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Peter Solino. I'm a lawyer at 550 Locust Street in Fall River. I represent the applicant in this matter. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, or I'd ask your Board to make a motion that we would be allowed to withdraw this petition without prejudice. We've been unable to settle the parking situation that the Board raised concerns about. We're still diligently working on it, but we've made the decision that it doesn't make sense to keep paying $500 a month for something that might not come to fruition. So respectfully, I ask the Board that we be allowed to withdraw without, and perhaps come back in the future.
Okay. Well, I respect that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant permission to withdraw without prejudice. Second.
Motion and second. On motion, first, is there any discussion? And on the motion, Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm number 02 under Old Business, GRK Investment Trust, Care of Attorney Peter A. Solino. Property is at 1298 and 1300 Rodman Street, MAP F89, lots 25 and 48. The applicant is requesting approval to restore the multifamily use of two properties, a six-unit building at 1298 Rodman Street and a three-unit building at 1300 Rodman Street. The proposal also includes subdividing the land into four lots, with the two multifamily homes remaining on one lot and three new lots being created for the proposed three-family dwellings. Special variance permit relief are requested to reinstate the prior use as well as to waive the lot coverage, side yard setback, and parking requirements per 86-445 of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance. The property is located in R4 two-family zoning district and an HD3 housing development overlay district. This petition was also previously tabled at the October 17th, 2024 meeting. Counsel?
Thank you. For the record, Peter Solino, on behalf of the applicant, petitioner, with me is Jeffrey Tallman, the engineer on the project. Before you members of the Board is a revised plan and a modified proposal that we believe was responsive to some of the concerns raised by both the Board and the abutters at the last month's meeting. I'll go over the highlights with you and then go over the relief needed, and then we'll go into the votes we need and the order that I'm seeking them in. So, the proposal is to divide the existing parcel into four lots. The proposal includes leaving the existing structures on Lot 1, as shown on the plan. The proposal includes building two family dwellings on each of the three remaining lots. The curb openings on Omen Street have been closed. The density has been reduced inasmuch as, rather than three three families, which is what was proposed last time, the proposal now includes three two families. The proposal also includes the provision of two off-street parking spaces for each of the newly erected two-family structures, as well as nine parking spaces for the existing structures on Lot 1. In terms of the relief needed, we'd be seeking a special permit first and foremost as a separate vote to establish or reestablish the use of the existing structures on Lot 1, and we would stipulate to the Building Inspector's conclusion that they are three-family dwellings. So that would be the first thing we'd be asking for. Next, if we get past that, we are seeking variances. The variances include lot area for the four lots shown on the plan, lot frontage for the four lots shown on the plan, lot coverage for the four lots shown on the plan, and side setback for what is shown as Lot 1, which is at the top of the plan orientation. Lastly, we need a special permit for parking for the Lot 1 spaces. So, if we prevail on a special permit for two three-unit dwellings on Lot 1, then we would need to provide 12 parking spaces, and we can only provide nine. So as a result, we need a special permit for that. So from my perspective, I think, we talked about this at the last meeting, but we would be seeking the vote on the request to reestablish the use of the two existing buildings as three-family buildings first, because I think if we don't prevail on that, then the rest of the petition can't go forward.
I would agree with you. I watched the last meeting, heard input from neighbors, et cetera. I thank you for going back and taking another look at this with a reduction to two-family dwellings on the other lots. It's somewhat more consistent. Any questions from the Board, other Board members at this point, as I wrestle with my computer?
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Just one question. The special permit that you're seeking, Attorney Solino?
Yes, yes.
That is not to find that it's substantial request detrimental. That's to be established.
That's, yes. So if you recall from the last meeting, our position was that the front house labeled 1298 was a six-family dwelling previously as a result of six meters. Mr. Hathaway gave a letter indicating that it was a three-family, in his estimation as the building official. So we looked at that long and hard, and we're willing to stipulate to that. So, the special, the first special permit I'm asking for is to stipulate that the existing structures labeled 1298 and 1300 Rodman Street be considered three-family dwellings.
Ricky, the purpose behind that is because they've been unoccupied for greater than two years. So, the grandfather on provisions for them not being conforming structures would have been eliminated. So that provision in zoning allows that non-conforming condition to be reinstated.
I understand. Thank you.
All right. This may drag things out a little bit, because before we can vote on this, we'll have to go to the public. Maybe it won't drag things out. Any other questions from the Board at this point? Any comments for engineering? I mean, this portion is straightforward. It's either...
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's, it might be more productive to have the overall discussion, and then when it comes times to vote, they were separate.
I agree. I agree with that.
The only thing that I would add, this was part of the last discussion, is that this is a two-family zoning district, and that's why the Board felt that construction of new three-family dwellings would have been inappropriate. So, the two-unit use is allowed by zoning, albeit the area does not meet the area requirements.
Correct.
Building setbacks, they do meet the requirements for building setbacks for the three new construction, constructed buildings. That's all I have to add.
Respecting your request, I'd rather move through this entire thing.
I'm fine with that.
Get all the feedback, and we'll go from there.
Fair, certainly.
Ultimately, we'll take the, we'll take the special permit to reestablish the use first when we get to the vote.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Anything else you wish to present on...
No, I'll respond, I'm assuming, to some objections, but...
Anything else from the Board on the proposal as a whole? For the separation of lots, the creation of the three new lots for three two-unit dwellings? Do you know the anticipated mix on number of bedrooms on those three two-units? You know we ask this every time?
Fair question.
Every time. It's like...
No, and again, we went back and forth with the petitioner on this, to come up with a design like the two-family units. I mean, we are providing the number of off-street parking spots to satisfy whether they be two or three bedrooms. We would like the ability, I believe, to have three bedrooms, but if the Board sees fit to limit it to two, then that's what the Board decides. So, but again, we do meet the parking requirement, whether they be two or three.
Yeah. That's fine. I mean, it's the same footprint as the three-family.
The footprint, because this is like a change that we didn't anticipate, that we had to kind of do quickly, it's probably larger than what's going to end up being built there, but we didn't want to strict ourselves to any certain footprint, so we did make it a little bit bigger so that whatever we end up building would fit inside that footprint. We don't have a footprint for a two-family that's going to be built on these at this time.
I think the difference too, Joe, is that the three units were stacked, where these are side-by-side townhouses.
Ah.
As you see how the door placement lays out.
Yeah.
All right. I mean, it's, the lot cover...
I'm assuming two stories?
Yes.
Yes. The lot coverage waiver is considerable. The frontage waiver as well, I mean, it's packing them in. And that's just me. That's my impression of, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing a very crowded, very crowded design. The other side of that is, it is fantastic to get those other two properties cleaned up. So, I guess it's two edges to the sword. No other questions from the Board at this time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in support of the petition?
Good evening. I'm Ken Fiola. I'm the Executive Vice President of the Bristol County UDC 139 South Main Street, Fall River. I'd like to, first of all, thank the Board for, you know, taking this matter up once again, and also set forth an understanding that the petitioner of this particular variance request has really worked hard to try to incorporate some of the feedback that was given as a result of the last meeting. I think, you know, the reduction in the number of units clearly is a step in the right direction in terms of trying to meet some of the concerns of the neighborhood itself. I think, you know, the recognition that the building is not a nine, the first building is a six-unit building as opposed to a nine-unit building also works in that advantage. And most importantly, I do think that this particular project here will actually significantly enhance that neighborhood by virtue of its build-out. Right now, you have a pretty dilapidated lot with two dilapidated buildings on it. Ultimately, at the end of the day, there's going to be a way for a developer to generate a return on their investment here. So, I think what you see before you tonight is a plan that helps address some of the needs and concerns of the residents, may not totally address them, but I think it was a step in the right direction to try to do that, and also develop a plan that's going to greatly enhance that neighborhood. I know it sounds, you know, crazy tonight, but I truly believe that to the extent that this is passed, this will have a pretty substantial positive impact on some of the abutting properties there in terms of being located next to newly-built facilities and rehab facilities as opposed to having a lot there that's just in total disrepair. It has been under disrepair for several years. So, with that in mind, I just ask the Board for their consideration and the approval of this variance request.
Right. Thank you, Ken. Anyone else here to speak in favor of the petition? I know there's a number of you here in opposition. I know that some of this was heard last month, so I just ask, and we want to hear from you, just keep your points brief, and if someone goes before you and says exactly what you want to say, say, "I feel exactly as Mr. Santos does." My name is et cetera, et cetera. Just in the interest of brevity. Who wishes to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Chairman, my name is Lou Mellon. I live on 577 Grinnell Street, Fall River. This whole project is detrimental to the neighborhood, contrary to what you hear. We're talking about putting 12 families in less than a quarter of an acre. The dimensions proposed are official in the City of Fall River are here, and none of these meet the requirements. Parking is atrocious in that neighborhood. There's several businesses nearby within 50 yards. I have seen at least 10 accidents in a corner of Rodman and Grinnell because of the traffic. There's no off-street parking whatsoever. That's one point. Second point is, one of the existing properties was condemned officially by the City of Fall River. If it's condemned, it must come down. The city went out for bits to knock it down. In the meantime, someone bought it. That doesn't change the status, as far as I'm concerned. It's still condemned. It needs to come down. It's a foot, foot-and-a-half away from my property. I have suffered over the last number of years because of negligence of the owner. So, to summarize, because I don't want to take all your time, this is unacceptable. It's not going to benefit the neighborhood, contrary to what you hear. It's detrimental. Health-wise, it's not good either, because I understand one of the houses has asbestos. So, the house, one of the houses needs to come down as it is, officially by the City of Fall River, and the new proposed buildings do not meet the requirements of the City of Fall River. None of them do. And absolutely, parking is atrocious. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will remind, I will remind everyone that just because a house has been condemned, doesn't mean it has to come down. It can be rebuilt. It can be redeemed. Somebody can come in and put a petition in front of the Board, sit down with the Building Inspector, et cetera, and work on that. Anyone else to speak in opposition?
Yes. James Klinger, 32 Omen Street.
Okay.
Parking is atrocious there, and also this new proposal, it looks like it's right against my property line. There's no leeway in there.
I don't understand what you mean by no leeway. Please...
Well, my property line, there's a stockade fence that I put in. If you look at the new proposal now, there's a walkway there. It looks like it's right, almost right on top of my property line.
Okay. Just make note of that to address, please. Anyone else to speak? Anything else, sir?
No, I...
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Yes, please.
My name is Sandra Frank. I live at 590 Grinnell Street. I agree with Louis. Parking is horrible there. I agree with all his points, and I think that something should be done about it. I think it's too many units for the amount of parking that is being given.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Okay. There hearing none. It comes back to the Board. You wish to counter? Yes?
Yes, I do, please. Okay. So, relative to the parking, on lots 2, 3, 4, two-family dwellings, which again are allowed by right in this zoning district, are to be constructed, and we provide for four off-street parking spaces per two-family dwelling. That's compliant. So, I hear the concerns about the neighborhood at large, but the newly constructed units have city-compliant parking. There's no question about it that the dimensions don't comply with the zoning ordinance, which is why we're here, as the Board knows. Relative to the property line point or question, certainly there's a fence there. We remove the curb cuts along Omen Street in order to limit the traffic backing out or driving into those lots from Omen Street and funnel everything through the access easement shown on from Rodman Street. So I think that, in terms of the newly constructed units, the parking's compliant. In terms of the special permit request and the reinstitution of the former use on Lot 1, the parking is consistent with what is generally approved, or recently approved, shall we say. If you take it at its face, we need 12 parking spaces. We're providing nine. So, you know, it's more than one-to-one. It's about one and a half to one. So I'd like to point that out. Additionally, relative to comments that were made surrounding imposition on property rights at Mr. Mellon's property, I anticipated that argument, so I did some research. And as I pointed out at the last meeting, that law was created pursuant to a zoning variance issued by this Board in 2004, and you can see Mr. Tallman's indicated existing deck on that plan. That deck is not on the variance plan that was approved by this Board in 2004. So if that deck is close to the property, I would submit to you that it's not approved. I'd also like to submit for the record that the property located at 577 Grinnell is actually owned by an Annabella Bananca. And so, if we go down a further road of what constitutes an abutter, I'd just like in the record that Mr. Mellon does not own the house that he lives in.
Can I respond?
Sure.
Interesting enough, Annabella Bananca is my wife, and I got a document here...
Okay.
...permission to speak on behalf of her.
No problem, but your name's not on the deed.
And the deck was approved by the Building Department, I assume, because I bought the house brand-new. It was already there.
Okay, well...
So, keep doing your research, because that's what it is.
Okay. So I'll submit my research, which affirmatively indicates that the deck was not approved as part of the zoning.
Anything else from the petitioner?
Yeah, I would just like to add, in regards to the concern from the abutter at 32 Omen Street, we are meeting the required 10-foot side setback adjacent to his property.
I see that.
Now, his, I mean, granted, we show the existing dwellings on abutting properties. Those, you know, locations may not be accurate, but it does appear, from what I've seen, that his dwelling may actually be closer to the property line than what we're proposing us to be. So, you know, if there's any concern about, you know, being too close, it might be on his end rather than on ours.
On the, on the parking on Omen Street, you've got three driveways facing Omen.
Those are walkways.
That's just walkways?
Yep.
Just walkways.
So the, the numbers two across those three properties, there is no, oh, see, it's taken off of that. I've got an older plan in here. I don't have a...
We submitted a new plan last week, yeah.
They removed the parking coming in off of Omen.
Okay, this is a mess. So, pardon?
They removed the parking that was coming off of Omen...
Yep.
...so that they weren't taking parking away from Omen Street.
Okay.
If the neighborhood would rather see than meet the parking requirement of two spaces per unit, they can put the driveways back in on Omen and use three of the spaces in the back of 2, 3, and 4 for the multifamilies.
Excuse me. Most families have two cars.
The zoning, the zoning bylaw requires...
I understand that.
No, you don't understand that apparently, because this is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I do understand that, and I'm talking about the neighborhood.
Please address the, all your questions through the Chair, please. I'm responding. The zoning bylaw requires two parking spaces per residential unit.
Right.
That's it.
Well, if it's two units, then it's four cars.
Correct. And that's what they're, that's what they're providing.
No, they're not providing.
Yes, sir. It's right on the plans.
And as it is.
And let's go back to it. Let's, I want you to understand the parking that's being proposed.
Parking would have a hard time getting in there if there was, God forbid, a fire.
Do you understand at least that the zoning requirement is two spaces per unit? On lot number two, they have a two-family dwelling. They have four parking spaces. That's two parking spaces per unit. On lot number three, they're proposing a two-unit building. They have four off-street parking spaces.
Off-street.
That's off-street.
Right.
That's two parking.
There's none available.
They're building parking on the parcel, which is what they're required to do. Again, on lot four, they're building a two-family structure, and they have four off-street parking spaces. That's two spaces per unit, in accordance with the bylaw. The only parking relief they're seeking has to do with the existing two-three families.
Could somebody point it out?
Where their three spaces shut.
I understand, but Mr. Chairman, by doing that, by building those parking spots, they're taking away from the minimum front yard, the minimum backyard, the minimum side.
No, they've met all the front yard, side yard, rear yard.
Actually, they have made side yard, they've made those setbacks. What they haven't made is the frontage requirement.
Right.
Okay, but that's not side yard, rear yard. And they exceed the coverage requirement.
They exceed...
The percentage of coverage. They exceed that.
Yes, sir.
So, they've, on those three lots, as the Director of Engineering has said, they have met the requirements for parking, and it's off-street. And they decided to close up the three driveways that had originally been proposed, which would have made the six parking spaces for three units in each building, and by closing those off, creates a curb along Omen Street, which adds to, adds to on-street parking. You can fight whether it's there or not, but currently, but there's no curb all the way across that section of Omen Street.
I would add, there is an asphalt berm there with a 24-foot wide opening, just in the driveway that goes on the property closer to 32 Omen, which we're proposing to close up.
Yep.
We're proposing to build a new sidewalk and put in granite curving all along the frontage of that property.
Okay. Anything else from the Board at this point?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Because maybe I'm not seeing it, and I hate to bring it back to the whole parking issue. So, each two-family house that is being built will have four parking spaces.
That's correct.
But we only see two of them.
Pardon?
I only see two parking spaces. Is it like...
There are four parking...
There are four parking spaces.
Jeff, do you want to show around?
Start.
So she can see it better on the floor.
Start.
Why don't you come up to the table, and Jeff can show you on a piece of paper.
So right here, with the number four, so it's 1, 2, 3, and 4. These nine...
This is one?
Yes, right here. 2, 3, and 4. And same thing here. 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Oh, this one is one?
Correct.
Not this one. This one is one. 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Yes.
And this is the walkway?
That's a walkway, correct.
1, 2, 3, and 4, and that's the walkway?
Correct.
Okay, I was not seeing that.
No, it's okay. That's, no bad questions. Anything else from planning?
Just a correct one in accuracy from Mr. Mellon. The existing structure at 1298 is not a foot to a foot and a half off of the property line. It's two and a half feet as shown on the plan. Not much different than a foot to four and a half.
No, no.
I just wanted to be correct for the record.
Okay.
Well, I'll say something to that. It used to be, but now that the trees over there pushed my fence a foot and a half.
The fence doesn't necessarily dictate your property line. Your deed dictates your, your deed dictates your property.
And the fence is right according to the deed. But it's, that's irrelevant. The problem is, is not that. The problem is, there's not enough area, too many families in a quarter of an acre, and there's absolutely no parking whatsoever. Because else have visitors.
What's the, what's the total square footage of lots 2, 3, and 4 combined, please?
It's about 16, right?
About 1600?
Just, well, over, just over 15.
15,000, 400.
Yeah. Around 15,400, 15,500, in that range.
Yep. Okay. And then it's 12,000 for Lot 1 in total?
Yeah.
Correct.
No. 6790 for Lot 1.
Oh, I'm sorry.
12,000 is the existing parcel.
The original.
The property right now is two parcels, two existing parcels. A 12,000 square foot parcel and basically a 10,000 square foot parcel.
Got you, okay.
So it's about a half an acre.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Let's do business, kids.
So the first thing you're looking for is a special permit?
I am, yes.
To reestablish use.
On Lot 1 only.
On Lot 1 only.
As two, three families.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we grant a special permit to reestablish use on Lot 1.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion on that motion. And by the way, Alexis will be voting on this one, Eric, because she had heard it previously in last month's. All right, that being the case, Alexis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Chairman Perre, yes. All right, on, then we're going to the creation of the new lots.
We have variants to contend with?
Yep.
And then one special permit for the parking. So those need to be handled separately.
Variants first.
Yeah.
Yeah, variants first, because whether you grant the special permit or not for the parking, they still may be able to meet the requirement without additional relief if they get super creative.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that the variants be granted as requested.
So that's waving side yard.
Right. On the revised plan.
On the revised plan, yes.
On the revised plan, yep.
Mm-hmm.
And it's also...
Right.
Yeah, okay, lot coverage.
It's frontage.
Side yard.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there a second on that?
So this is just Lot 1, one clarification?
No, this is all the variants work.
Mark 2, 3.
So subdividing it into four lots, everything that you see except for parking. So right now, you are technically dealing with two existing three-family dwellings, where you weren't until the special permit was granted, reinstituting those uses. So now that you have established that use, now the variants as a whole can move forward.
Right.
So it's lot area, lot frontage, building setback for the structure at 1300.
Right.
And lot coverage for all four.
Point of order, we also did not bifurcate the first vote.
I don't think it's a special permit that needed to be, but you could by all means correct it.
We could. I think it's a statement at this point, that the reestablishment, or the reinstatement of the uses of the existing two buildings is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Could you...
Yes, I would, I would alter the motion to include that.
Okay. Second on that, please.
Second.
Second by Dan DePere. On that motion then, Ricky?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
And Chairman Perre, yes. Okay. On the variants, setbacks, lot coverage.
Some of the motions on the table to grant.
I'm sorry. Conditions? This does go to site plan, right, Dan?
Certainly.
Oh, yeah.
All of them do, all, all four lots.
Okay. Was there a second on that one, on the variants?
I'll give it a second.
Second from Jim Calkins. Discussion? In that case, on the variants, Ricky?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Chairman Perre, I have to say no.
So that's it, game over. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to claim that even though the votes were opposed, that they did not carry.
Yeah, as a, as a clarification, just because it was three to two means that there was not a supermajority, so it does not carry. So it's not happening. Onto new business. Item number one, Eugene and Michelle Borges, care of attorney David M. Assad, 431 Whipple Street, map G9, Lot 14. The applicant is requesting a variance and special permit to transform the current non-conforming three-family residence into a four-family dwelling. In accordance with Section 86-425-2, it requires a reduction of the requirements outlined in Section 86-148i, from 600 feet to 460 feet, citing hardship and constraints imposed by the existing structure. Additionally, the applicant, the applicant seeks authorization for a special permit to establish a one-bedroom apartment in the basement, which would waive the dimensional requirements specified in Section 86-35 and 86-148i due to the layout of the current structure. Furthermore, the applicant is requesting a special permit under Section 86-445 to reduce and/or modify the stipulations of Section 86-441, 86-4, I'm sorry, 444A3 and 86-9 by not providing two additional off-street parking spaces by decreasing the dimensions of the parking space from 9 by 18 to 8.25 feet by 17.75 feet, while still maintaining four off-street parking spaces. The property is located in an A2 apartment zoning district. I love your applications.
Mr. Chairman, may I pass up some hot work?
Please. Can we grade it?
You can. You will by your vote.
Okay.
This is just a David Assad sketch.
Very, very good, David.
Thank you.
I would have color-coded this myself.
Here you go. So, yes, the chairman read what the petition was all about. This particular, for the record, attorney David Assad, I'm an attorney licensed to practice in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I maintain offices at 326 Pine Street in the city of Fall River. With me this evening is Eugene Borges, one of the owner, along with his wife. His wife is unable to be here. Michelle can't be here this evening. So their petition is this. This is the ancestral home of the Borges family. The mother and father, Eugene's mother and father bought the property in 1966. The Borges family has lived there. Eugene bought the brothers and sisters out after the death of the mother. And in the basement, it was an extension of the family home. There was a bedroom that was created, there was a bathroom that exists, and it's been used as an additional room of the ancestral home. Now, there's an idea that if they can convert it or get permission to use it as another apartment, then they can legally rent it out and have another unit in this pre-existing three-family dwelling. The structure, or as it's currently laid out, there is a bedroom, 12 by 11, 132 square feet. There's a combination living room and kitchen, 240 square feet, 20 by 12. The bathroom area is, 4 by 11 is what's being proposed. And I showed you where in the kitchen area, we've got the refrigerator, dishwasher, the counter sink, and the stove. The total square footage, by my calculation, is 468.625 square feet. The work that was done downstairs to accommodate the use of it was done by pulling building permits. So proper permits were pulled for the plumbing, proper permits were pulled for the electricity. Now that we're introducing, or the possibility of introducing, non-family member living there and turning it into an apartment, we come before the board to make sure we have proper authorization and we have a legal apartment. There is, there are currently off-street parking for four cars, but to make it, where our ordinance provides for nine by, nine feet by 18 feet, it has to get reduced. And I realize that the distinction that I've gotten the petition is such that it doesn't seem like it's much, but that's what the actual measurements come up to, to make the four units there. It's on the corner of Osborne and Whipple Street, and around the house, there is in fact on-street parking available. It's a one-bedroom, the density does increase. Eugene's brother was the one that was the last one living or occupying the space downstairs. So we're before the board asking for the permission to turn it into a legitimate apartment in, on this pre-family dwelling. I'll be happy to answer any questions concerning this particular project.
Yeah, so the kitchen fixtures, et cetera, are already in existence?
I, I don't think, are they in existence now, Eugene?
They're there.
They're there.
They're there, so...
So de facto, this is what's there.
But it's been...
It hasn't been used.
A family house with a family member there.
Correct.
It's never been rented out.
Never. And his lawyer won't let him rent it out until we get permission.
He's got a good lawyer. Needs a new artist, but he's got a good lawyer. Dan, any, any comments on this? Questions from the board at this point? None? Is there anybody in attendance who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone, I thought Peter Salino was gonna jump in there. Is there any, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, it comes back to the board. So is, just so I'm clear, is this the number of parking spaces that are there now?
Yes.
Or, so it, it's been four parking spaces?
It's been four.
You just wanna clean it up.
But I wanted to clean it up to say that the four don't measure nine by 18.
Okay. That's fair. I appreciate that. All right. What are our wishes?
So, well, no, I was gonna say, if you look at my petition, if you go through the relief, it's sequential, and if we do it that way, we're, we're good.
Make my life easy. First, we are looking at a special permit to transform the non-conforming three-family residence into a four-family dwelling under 86-425.
Bifurcated.
Yeah, please.
Yes.
Hope it happens diehard.
[laughing]
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Very good. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion and second. On the motion, Ricky?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Eric?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Chairman Perre, yes. Okay. Then we move on to, good God, request for a reduction of requirements of the apartment itself. If you recall that in this district, we measure our apartments of no less than 600 square feet. There is roughly 460 square feet there. This is a variance. Hardship is the shape of the existing building, shape and size of the existing building. I'm sure there's a boiler room down here someplace, et cetera. So...
So before the variants, Mr. Chairman, don't you need the second half of the special permit?
Yeah, we do, we do. I was so excited that, I get flustered, my ex-bosses are sitting in front of me all the time. I've been waiting for these days, David.
I stay up at night.
All right. Yes, please. Second half of the special permit.
That the request be granted as, as proposed, as proposed.
And that is for the four family. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Jim Calkins. Then on the motion, Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Chairman Perre, yes. Now on to the variants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance, allowing the apartment size to be reduced from 600 square feet to a minimum of 460 square feet.
Very good. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Dan.
It was Eric.
Oh, was it? It was Eric, sorry, man. Something about that ended the table, there's a story behind that. Discussion on the motion, hearing none. On the motion, Eric?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chairman Perre, yes. And lastly, we're dealing with the off-street parking spaces, the two additional parking spaces that are being created, or actually, they're not being created.
Not being created.
We're talking about the size of the parking spaces being reduced from nine feet to eight and a quarter feet by...
Seventeen and three-quarters.
And the length of, of 18 reduced to 17 and three-quarters. Still maintaining the four off-street parking spaces.
And again, with a special permit and a bifurcation.
Correct.
It's a little heavy-handed here, but sure, go for it.
Combine them.
I'm just, I'm just reading the proposed request of the special permit.
Yeah, yes.
So I would make the motion that this request is also not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second, please.
Second.
Second, discussion, hearing none. On the motion, Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chairman Perre, yes. Then it's the grant.
And then the second half is that the special permit as proposed be granted.
You have a second?
Right.
Second on the motion, discussion, hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chairman Perre, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
Item number two under new business, Tetral Realty, Realty, Real, I'm sorry, Real Estate LLC, care of attorney Peter E. Salino, 102 Mises Street, map CO8, Lot 14. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the existing parcel into three lots, leaving the existing dwelling on Lot 1 and constructing a two-family dwelling on each Lot 2 and Lot 3. Applicant seeks relief from 86, attachment 1 of the Fall River zoning ordinance by way of variance. Best of lot area affecting lots 2 and 3, rear yard setback affecting Lot 2, and lot coverage affecting Lot 1. The property is located in an R4 two-family zoning district.
Thank you. For the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant petitioner...
Thank you. For the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant petitioner, uh, I came to City Hall earlier today to file a request to table this petition. Um, my understanding is that there were some concerns relative to the design of it, so I paid the five hundred dollars to your clerk, and I'm respectfully requesting that this matter be tabled to the December hearing.
Okay. What's the date of our September hearing?
December eighteenth.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's Christmas.
I thought it was the nineteenth.
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 Nineteenth. Do we have a, uh, motion for the tabling?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, grant the petition to table to the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
Okay, very good. Is there a second on the motion to table?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, I just, well, let's, let's pass it first. Uh, thereby, on the motion, Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. To those, uh, who might have come here this evening regarding this petition, it will be continued to the, uh, December meeting. You will not receive an additional, uh, notification. So, we don't, we don't re-notice on these, so it's, it's been tabled. Just make a note, and if you want to be heard, come back on, uh, December nineteenth. Or if you wanna submit a letter in, you can do so by getting it out to the planning department.
Do we have to resubmit what we've already put in?
No. No, if you've already, if you've already got something on file, you're all set. It'll be read at that time. All right. Have a great Thanksgiving. Thanks for coming out.
Um, one thing you might wanna check in before the meeting, um, in case the applicant submits revised plans, taking into account some of your concerns, so.
Revised plan would be perfect. That's what we're looking for.
Right, so, check in, so that way, at least you know what you're coming into on the... Yep, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, item number three, KRC Realty LLC, care of Peter, attorney Peter A. Salino. Uh, zero Vale Street, map E O one, lot nineteen. The applicant is requesting a variance to waive all zoning requirements in an A two apartment district for the construction of a two-family dwelling on a proposed lot nineteen. This includes waiving the frontage area, side yard and rear setbacks, as well as the lot coverage restrictions. Counsel?
Yes, good evening. Peter Salino, applicant, uh, counsel to the applicant. The applicant is Kevin Kurt in his LLC. Mr. Kurt is sitting directly behind me, the engineer on the project, as Jeffrey Tolman. Um, the proposal, as Mr. Chairman just read, includes erecting a single, uh, two-family dwelling on the subject lot. Mr. Tolman's research indicates that this is a lot of record. It was on the original Slade Mills Platte. Um, as you can see from the plan, it's fifty by a hundred. Um, the application does provide sufficient off-street parking for four cars, uh, so that meets the requirement. We've spent a lot of time on what the requirements of parking are tonight, so I'll highlight that. Um, ultimately, though, we do need significant waivers. I should also know for the record, as I did in the petition, that this matter had come before the board previously uh, and was denied. Mr. Kurt has continued to pay taxes and continue to hold this lot. If you've driven by it, there's a couple of structures on it. It's sort of a, just a miscellaneous lot. Um, and really, the size of the lot is the problem and the cited hardship in the petition. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the proposal. Mr. Tolman can, and Mr. Kurt is here as well.
Just, just an observation, we're not waiving all zoning requirements. And, and, you know, when it reads all, it, it's...
I think it's all.
No, it's all.
It's all. This is, this is...
Well, no, you're not, you're not waiving height, for instance.
Okay, all right.
But as far as the footprint goes, this is the trifecta.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this is what we live for.
I just don't like to give all on...
So we have eighteen, we have eighteen on the frontage, ten foot on the side.
We're not waiving parking?
Ten-foot rear. The parking will extend beyond onto, uh, what I assume will be grass area, correct? Well, on one side.
Uh, to the north? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. No, it's not to the north. It'd be to the west.
The west is the street.
No, I'm talking about lot two.
There's only one lot.
There's only one lot.
There's only one lot, yeah.
Are you on the wrong one?
I'm on the wrong one.
This is Vale Street.
I apologize. This thing's all... Okay, God. Forget it. I'll look at that.
Mr. Chairman, while you're, um, while you're working with that, Peter Salino?
Yes.
Um, so you're asking for, um, all, waiving all on applicable, um, zoning ordinances, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
So, exactly where are you short, by how much on each?
Sure, I have it highlighted here. So, if you look in the, uh, A two district, you would need twelve thousand square feet, and the lot has five thousand thirty-three. Uh, the lot frontage would need to be a hundred, and we have fifty point three-three. The side yard needs to be twenty in the district. We have ten. The rear yard needs to be thirty. We have ten. The lot coverage needs to be thirty percent, and we're proposing seventy-five percent.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking at all the lots around it, and one of these things is not like the other.
Well, for example, uh, there's a lot to the east labeled now or formerly of Garant. It says it's an existing two-family, and the lot size is five thousand thirty-three square feet, which is identical to our lot, because this was all the Slade Mill Platte.
Yeah, and I think if you look at the density, um, on some of the, uh, lots to the north, on nine thirty-seven Globe Street, which is two lots over, that's a three-family on a just over five thousand square foot lot, same as nine forty-nine. And then also, the, uh, there's two three-families to the south of this, on slightly larger lots, but density-wise, it, it basically comes out the same.
With the abutting lot to the north, the east, and the northeast are all single families on approximately all the exact same square footage.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I'm looking at, for example, the lot to the south, uh, Lopes Lot, is existing three-family on a much bigger lot.
Those were subdivided, um, under eighty-six four twenty-three B.
Right. The two Lopes lots are...
There were two multifamilies on one lot, but you're right, they are on larger lots.
I mean, they could put two more houses on that if they all said...
The last position, actually, which was to construct a single-family home on here, was actually going to acquire some land from those larger lots.
Is that right? Interesting. Um, that's what happens when we say no further subdivision. Um, any other questions from the board?
Just had to hear what Dan has to say.
I have nothing else to add. I mean, Peter said it all. I mean, it's...
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the petition? Please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Pamela Correles. I am at one seventy-nine Bush Street, right behind the proposed construction. Um, this has, has been in front of your board before and was denied through our, the previous owners of our home. I think that, as I believe all of you are homeowners or reside in a place, that you have neighbors, and I think that all of you can appreciate that privacy is something very important. And there is no, you could build that would be tall enough to protect our privacy, um, from a multifamily construction that is ten feet away from our backyard. Um, and, uh, selfish point, I work from home. I am the big provider of my family. And a continuous noise of construction would disrupt my ability to provide for my family. I work for a law firm. I deal with delicate manners, and I don't think that clients would appreciate the construction noise, and that would be, uh, not good for business. In addition to that, I am also trying to cultivate a garden, which would be obstructed by any type of long, tall construction on that area. We've, uh, we purchased that space two years ago, and since then, we've been trying to make it better for not only ourselves, but for our neighbors due to the abandoned state that the house was left when we purchased. And my last point is that for the two years that we've owned this, this home, um, we contacted Mr. Kurt a few times and requested him to take some care of that property, which he, at some point, sent someone to take care of the overgrown weeds. But there are two boats, one grill, one city garbage container, all open, accumulating water, exposing the entire neighborhood to mosquitoes and any other type of diseases that could be generated by that. I am not an expert. Um, the city, uh, um, told us that they would ask Mr. Kurt to take care of those items, and that he promised the city that he would. He never did. And according to paragraphs twenty-six to forty on your Fall River website, uh, the owner or person in control of any private, private property shall at all times maintain the premises free of litter, provided, however, that the sections shall not prohibit the storage of litter in authorized private receptacles. And E, the owner or person in control of any vacant lot shall at all times maintain the premises free of litter and control the growth of wild plants, which, um, Mr. Kurt has failed multiple times to help us with that problem.
Appreciate that. You did your homework. When those things arise, should something else happen in the future, go to the building department on those. And if you don't get any satisfaction, call the mayor's office.
We did.
Talk to, really, okay?
We went to, um, the health department. Uh, the inspector came out too. Um, and I even emailed the mayor. Uh, most of my requests and pleads were ignored. Um, even having one of the Fall River employees severely dismissing me and mistreating me, accusing me of being a liar and things like that. So, we kind of hit nowhere with asking the city for help.
It would, it would normally be minimum housing regarding stuff like not cutting grass or trash. So, if you go to minimum housing unit on the fifth floor, that would be the department to go through. They used to be in with the health department, so maybe that's how, maybe you got to them before, but now they are separate entities, so.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
And the only thing I can say, if this is approved, construction's a limited amount of time. You know, I know it can be disturbing, and my next-door neighbor did an addition to his house. It took forever.
And I understand that.
And I work from home, so I understand. Um, as far, as far as, you know, an obstruction, how, how tall would the proposed building be? It would not be in excess.
Two stories. No, it, it would conform to the requirements of the zone.
So, quite honestly, I mean, anything as far as, you know, establishing a garden, etc.
The requirements of the zone is what, eighty feet in the A two?
Well, it, it, it wouldn't be eighty feet.
Seventy, so what?
I'm just thinking.
Narrow that down, then.
You want to establish a garden, you're not gonna get that much shading from the house. It's, you know, it'd be, you know, to the, uh, to the, to the west of you, so you might lose the sunset. So.
Uh, I would add to add to the point you made regarding the construction laws. I believe that even though it was delayed on your part, um, uh, building, construction, something from scratch would take a lot longer than someone, um, doing an addition to their home. And with all due respect, um, Mr. Kurt showed that he doesn't care about his neighborhood or his neighbors. So, I don't believe that that would change with the construction or him having that building there and renting out children people.
And, and understand that somebody has the right to build a lot, so.
Of course. Of course. I understand.
I understand it can be a pain. I understand you work from home, professional, professional job. I'll go from there.
So what would the height be and what would be the number of bedrooms?
Two-bedroom. Two-bedroom. So, two-bedrooms per unit. And the height would be, I'd, I'd say it'd be in line with, um, it'd be no more than forty-five. We could even drop down to thirty-five for the, the, to match the two-family R four district.
Anything else from the board? Anything else from the petitioner?
Uh, no, my client's indicating let it go to a vote.
Sorry?
My client's indicating let it go to a vote, so we're not gonna ask for a table or anything like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's our wishes, folks?
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny on the table? Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion, uh, and second to deny. Any discussion on the motion? They're hearing none on the motion. Eric?
Yes.
Ricky?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Item number five, love this name, Blind Faith LLC, care of Jeff...
Skip it.
Number four.
I did. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I walked right past Mr. Tetrel. Not even the iPad's fault. I picked up a piece of paper and didn't read my own notes. Item number four, Tetrel Realty, uh, Real Estate LLC, care of attorney Peter A. Salino. Uh, this is for Terrace Street, map I twenty-three, lot thirty-nine. The applicant requests a variance to waive dimensional requirements in the A two apartment zoning district. The petitioner, excuse me, proposed to, uh, construct a four-unit townhouse-style dwelling on an existing, non-conforming vacant lot twenty-three dash, I twenty-three dash zero zero three-nine, waiving minimum lot area, frontage, yard setback and lot coverage. The petitioner also requests a special permit to modify parking requirements pursuant to section eighty-six four forty-five.
Thank you. For the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of Tetrel. Uh, my client appeared before the board in July of two thousand twenty-three. The board granted the requested relief at that time.
No, your client. It was a previous one.
Oh, strike that. Mr. Benevides, who owned it prior to my client, received relief from this board, which runs with the land, um, and was not fully exercised as a result of two issues that came up during the site plan review process. So, starting with the premise that the board's seen this petition before and granted the relief, uh, the issues that were discovered are, first, the northerly boundary line of the property at the last presentation was thought to be approximately two feet wider. And as a result, the rear setback that Mr. Tolman has shown as eight feet on the screen left of the plan was previously presented as ten feet.
Mm-hmm.
But as a result of on-the-ground survey and the abutting lot being a land court lot, his survey crew discovered there was a two-foot discrepancy, which creates the need for a further waiver of rear lot, uh, setback. And then next, there's a, an existing retaining wall on the property. And as a result of that condition of the property, the proposed parking area had to be altered so that the aisle widths were a little bit smaller to accommodate the retaining wall. So ultimately, the proposal is the same but for a request to make the rear lot, uh, rear lot setback eight feet and the parking aisle widths smaller pursuant to a special permit.
All right. So the parking aisle width would be twenty feet instead of...
Correct, correct. Other than that, my client, Tetrel Real Estate, is intending to, uh, go through with the special, I'm sorry, with the, um, site plan requirements. I also think, and everyone can see it, but to know for the record, on the immediate west of this property line, he also owns that twelve-unit building.
I thought so.
So if anything, he's building close to himself, um, so just wanna point that out.
Couldn't you get a letter from him saying he was interested?
Interesting. All right. Questions from the board? Comments from planning?
Just to make sure that, I mean, I know you've requested the lot coverage. How much did that change from the previous petition? Um, I mean, the lot's a few square feet smaller, but the parking lot's getting smaller, so it might have actually been a war.
I think it actually went down, um...
You're proposing sixty-six?
Yeah. Actually, I have the previous plan.
Sixty-seven.
Oh, yeah, sixty-seven. Went down one percent.
There we go. Look at that. There we go. Look at that.
Amazing. Even losing two feet. It's the shrunken parking lot. Any other questions? Turn to the public. Anybody here to speak in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Fiola.
Yeah, I'm Ken Fiola, Director Vice President, West of Columbia, U.C., 139 South Street. I'm hoping that the board will see fit to grant this petition of a fort-size applies to this particular variance request. As you can see, it was a previously approved plan, but now they're coming before you tonight with some minor modifications for that approval so as to comply with some of the zoning, I mean, with the site plan review. But I think, you know, the addition of this, of these apartments to that particular neighborhood will also be beneficial not only to the development, but also to the neighborhood of lots. So with that in mind, I hope that you see fit to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in favor? Anyone against?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance in accordance with the advantage submitted in the plan.
All right. I'm going to carry the variance first.
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the requested variance relief. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Eric?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chairman Perri, yes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I also move that we find that the proposal is, would not be substantially more detrimental to the variance, and move that we grant the special permit.
Okay. We've put them together, which is cool. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second from Ricky Sahadi. On the motion, Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chairman Perri, yes.
Thank you.
And now to an empty house. Item number five. Blind Faith LLC, care of Jeffrey Tolman. Wow, N-E-N-C. He's getting it all in here. 240 Griffin Street, map G23, lot 10. The applicant seeks a variance to waive requirements in the R4 two-family zoning district. Petitioner proposes to convert the office space in the existing non-conforming mixed-use building into a third residential unit that brings the number of residential units in the building from two to three. Therefore, it's called the third unit. The petitioner also seeks a special permit pursuant to 86445 to modify the off-street parking requirements.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants here on behalf of Blind Faith LLC. The property, as you had mentioned, is located at 240 Griffin Street. It's parcel ID G23, lot 10. It's near the intersection of Griffin Street and Broadway. It's kind of a regular-shaped lot where there is a 10-foot wide finger that goes from the main parcel out to Broadway. The parcel itself is located in the two-family R4 zoning district. The lot is non-conforming due to frontage. The area I have listed on the lot is an area that should be 8,400 square feet, not 3,400 square feet, just for clarification. But the frontage that the lot has is 5,207. Whether the, in that particular district, you're required to have 75 feet. There's an existing 30-by-75-foot building on the northeast corner of the property. This building is non-conforming due to side and rear yard setbacks. Historically, the use of the buildings was non-conforming. Based on city records, it was used industrially between 2004 and 2018. I believe at that time, it might have been Jonathan's Furniture Restoration, if I'm not mistaken, that occupied the building. Then from 2019 to 2023, it was converted, based on the assessment records, to a commercial warehouse. In 2022, the property was sold, and at that time, a building permit was pulled to add two apartments to the structure. They went forward, they did the construction on that, and they received an occupancy permit in 2023. My client bought the property in September of this year. At that time, the previous owner had begun to convert the remaining space in the building, which was a small office, I believe, on the southwest corner of the property, and a garage area, which was on the southeast corner of the property, into a third residential apartment. Does not appear any permits were pulled for that work. So as a result, in October, my client reached out to me to begin the process of making the third unit a legal apartment, which is why I'm here tonight. The relief that we're asking for, so this was filed, this petition was filed as a variance/special permit. The, I believe that adding the third unit, or allowing the third unit, could be done by special permit because the existing building, when it was, received the occupancy permit in 2022, did have an office and garage space attached to it. So technically, it was still non-conforming. It was a mixed-use building at that time. So therefore, you know, if the board sees fit, I believe you can act on this and vote on this if you find it to be not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as a special permit because we are eliminating that use legally and converting that to a third unit, which will be a one-bedroom unit. The other thing we're asking the special permit for is for parking spaces. There, we are proposing five on the site. There is an existing parking lot on the property. It's not delineated. There's no striping associated with it. So we propose that we, you know, go in and stripe that, identify these five parking spots, four of which would be for the existing two units that are on the property, and then the fifth parking spot would be for the additional one-bedroom unit. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Just curious, on the parking area, you've made some mark-offs on the parking. Could you get another space on there?
Well, as you can see, and what's not showing on here is the grading. So as you can see, there's a block retaining wall along the front, so that front hatched-out area is not usable. Certainly, to use it, you would have to pull in, and it would be perpendicular to the proposed parking, which would interfere with that, and then to use the area to the north that's hatched out...
It's not going to get you enough.
It's not going to get you anything, and then backing out of that spot would be problematic.
Yep.
And again, because of the third unit just being the one-bedroom unit, it's my position that the one space would be adequate.
What's the approximate size of that third unit?
I don't have, I don't have the breakdown in sizes. I'm not exactly sure. I don't, I have not been inside the building. I know the existing two-bedroom, I mean, the existing units on there, the two units, I think one of them's a two-bedroom, and the other one might be a three. So this one would be a one. The exact size, I'm not aware of. But this, again, this is in, this is not in the A2 district, so there is no minimum.
Right. No, I was just curious.
Yeah, I'm not, again, I'm not certain. I apologize.
This is all one level, too.
Yeah.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, I think the initial use of it, again, being industrial and then the commercial warehouse, there is a garage door on the front where the existing concrete pad extends into the parking area. To the left of that inside the building is where the office space was, and then it was just open slab.
So just go, just go in, got it?
Yeah.
So over again?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
And which would you suggest, a special permit or a variance?
Either or. Well, if the board was inclined to approve it, I'd give them the variance so that there's no question.
Right.
But if the board wants the easy way out, and the applicant's asking you to vote on it as a special permit, you could do that as well. I don't have an issue with it either way, but if I knew what, if I knew what you were going to vote, I would ask for a variance. So I would...
Right.
But you don't know that.
We haven't gotten into hardships and that type of thing.
I mean, I don't, I think a special permit would be adequate. I don't know, what did the Building Department, did it special permit slash variance as well? So the Building Department's apparently agreed that it could be either or, I think.
Could be either or.
Double check.
You know what? I don't have the, I didn't receive the, I don't have my copy of the application. I apologize.
Would you cover hardship just so that we have the option of going to variance?
Well, the...
Existing non-conforming structure.
Yeah, it's existing non-conforming. The space is going to be, you know, again, it's a non-conforming use. That was in there. It's going to be converted to a conforming use.
The Building Department did list it, so it could be either or. And you would be eliminating a non-conforming use, which would be the commercial use in an R2 district, I mean, R4 district?
If we vary it, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the variance works to, the variance works to the owner's...
Benefit.
Benefit. You've got the nonconformity of this former industrial building in here. It's been cut into two apartments. For whatever reason, they left a third apartment and operated it. This eliminates the commer, if we do a variance, it eliminates the commercial use of the building, so...
I don't see why that's an advantage to the petitioner. I think it puts further restrictions on the property.
Because they're spending money to build this out, and I realize, you know, there's office buildings nearby, et cetera, et cetera, but there's also dwellings nearby. There's mixed use nearby. I'll ask the question, just because the TV cameras don't know. There's no one here. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none. It's all us. So we could grant this as a special permit or a variance. Either we carry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we treat this as a variance and move approval or granting of that variance as submitted on the plan.
Very good. And a second discussion? You're hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chairman Perri, yes.
Thank you.
It's been a heck of a night.
Special permit for parking.
Ah, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Don't go anywhere, Jeff. Can't go anywhere without parking.
Mr. Chairman, I find that the special permit request would not be substantially more detrimental to the area, and move that we grant the special permit.
And a second on that, Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chairman Perri, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You, too.
We don't see him, but I'm sure we'll see him.
Citizens input. There's no citizens here except for us. Approval of minutes for the October 17, 2024 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move waiving of the reading of the minute and approve of the same.
Motion and second on that. And Jim?
Yes.
You were here. So Alexis?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
And Chairman Perri, yes.
Move a German.
Move a German. Do we have a second on a German, guys?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Great, thank you.